Call one of the Pudlema City Schools Board of Education and they'll rise for the side of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Boldman, you have some common circumstance to accomplish.
Phoebe, are you ready? I'm gonna have you take down.
Oh.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Phoebe Ellis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear faith, truth, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well and faithfully.
And that I.
Will, well and faithfully.
Will, well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties about which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, if you can join.
Thank you very much.
You made sure she got a key to the E.O. plush board facility. Your car is outside. Hopefully it's fine.
Thank you.
All kidding aside.
She has to be here. I'm excited about the opportunity, so thank you, everyone.
Very good. All right, let's move this thing along. Item C, adoption and approval of the agenda. I don't think they had any changes. Were there any requested changes to the agenda?
The agenda, no.
Okay, motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We'll play it as a virus. Approval of the minutes of June 25th and July 9th. Sue, if you could help me with who's eligible and who's not.
Everybody.
We have everybody.
We have everybody.
On the 5th, we're good. The 25th.
I think we're all here except Carolyn.
I know. So, everybody's eligible. So.
Well, I had a suggested, well, not suggested change, a necessary change in June 9th or July 9th.
Okay.
There's a name, just a name issue.
It is revised.
Okay, well, then you're way ahead. So, perfect.
Yeah.
So, if the revised one says what it's supposed to say, then I can.
Yes, as revised.
As revised.
Okay.
The name.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anybody else have any changes or questions?
Make a motion to. Second.
All those in favor? Close. So, Sue, that goes for voting one.
She was just chomping at the bit to make her first motion.
It's all wide open.
Throw her a softball, Troy.
I don't get to raise Carolyn to anymore.
She was our designated second.
All right, let's move on to item E, special recognition, reports and presentations. May you now an honored guest for us today?
I most certainly do, and this will be a lively and entertaining presentation, we are sure, as you can tell by the fruits and vegetables on the screen there. Anyway, we have our food services supervisor, Ray DiGaimo, who oversees all of the cafeteria programs in the district.
Ray, is that Ray?
Hi.
Turn it over to you. And Ray is going to talk about his success in managing our food service program in the black, which is an amazing feat.
Our total revenue for the 12-13 year was $1,927,420.00 in penny, and our total expenses were $1,866,373.68 for a net of $61,046.33. Goals met, food services program profitable even with unexpected expenses. We successfully transitioned food service from SHAPE to the new food-based menu planning program.
What does that mean? SHAPE was SHAPE.
SHAPE was the former program.
The great program we were running.
And this is the new one that we have to run.
I threw that out to you in case you wanted to get just one last shot. It was better than the new one we went to, but okay.
Coordinated review effort, a CRE, 2012, Pudlema Schools had a CRE performed on our nutrition program with outstanding results, and this year we were chosen for the SMI, the School Meals Initiative. We had an SMI review in May that had an outstanding result, and I have a copy of it for you to take a look at.
Who conducts the review, the SMI?
That's done by mistake.
Mistake.
So, when we were picked to participate, that's a good thing?
Randomly.
Random? We could have done with.
Audit.
It's another audit.
I mean, they didn't pay us to participate.
I was one of the lucky ones.
You didn't verify. You were.
These are right. And as you can see before you, we were doing things exceptionally well, yeah.
Right, so it was surprising that we were picked in a subsequent year to go through a whole additional audit. Basically, it's an audit, and the CRE was an audit, an extensive audit. Basically, they found one very minor, very minor finding, otherwise the program was run in an outstanding way, which is incredible. So, this is under the new program requirements and audit to make sure that we were following the new.
Watch nice colored food?
Yes.
Yes.
Purple.
Highlights, Sonoma County Board of Health came in and reviewed the schools in May with no errors found. The reports are available at all sites. The charge is $10,308 per year to review the schools, which is an additional cost of the food service program.
So, we were trying to avoid having this done. But the Department of Health said at the school district, you're required to, so.
Is this happening every year?
Yes.
They wanted to.
Ten grand.
Twice a year. Twice a year. Twice a year they want to come in and.
Find nothing.
Wow.
But don't we already, there's no county board health, we already pay for them, sure taxes and stuff, why would we pay extra money for that?
We never had two in the past.
This is a resource for them?
Yes.
Oh, there's. So, there's still money right out of kids' plates.
Yes.
We confirmed that actually, they have their. We did, we were trying to fight it, and we were saying we're not subject to it.
The only way that.
Consulting consultants.
The only way we could get around is if the program is in the red, because then I could show that we can't afford.
Put it in the red box.
You have to understand, Ray, how to not be on the backs of the Gemma Fund and show a profit every year.
Sure. You're gonna do it.
But to save money and give a third of it.
Yeah, basically, you.
Maybe do it twice a year.
Your tail off, maybe that's sixty thousand.
The money you save, now you can save.
I hope that's also staff time, I don't know. How many different facilities do they inspect? So, there's.
They did the comprehensive sites.
No, they do all of, they do all of our sites, including San Antonio. I mean, every site gets inspected. So, it's like sixteen, I want to say sixteen, I think somewhere around.
Well, there's twelve kitchens that you're operating.
I have the warehouse.
On the warehouse.
I have the warehouse. You know this.
So, that's a day for you.
Oh. That's a week.
But Steve, is that part of the ed code?
We don't get anything.
Health and safety.
Is this health and safety? State or county?
It's allowed by the state, and it's incorporated in the county's health and safety there.
I'm gonna talk to Dave.
If we can even decrease it to once a year, it would be very beneficial.
Well, I could see if we had a series of foodborne illnesses.
Yeah, if they checked in the fall and found something wrong. I can see that coming back.
Yeah, then I could see it.
Checking the fall and were clean, they don't need to come back until the next one.
It was really interesting because they based setting that price on the amount of risk we have, and again, you're right, I mean, we stood there and we said, really? They considered us a high risk because we have a production kitchen. That was one of the reasons.
Yes.
Yeah, so go ahead and.
So, it's more expensive to have a production.
Wouldn't it be nice to know what the other districts are getting charged, though?
All of Sonoma County gets charged, but there's quite a few other counties that they don't charge the school districts.
So, by definition, what's a production kitchen?
That's where we make food for all the elementary schools, and then we send it to the elementary schools.
And other schools, are there other non-production kitchens? And what are they doing?
We have, we have the high schools, for example, make their own food, but it's served on the campus, so there's, there's less, well, I don't know how they.
It would seem like that would not make us higher, I mean, I get the higher risk.
Part of it's high risk because we use raw meat. We don't use processed.
God forbid we get penalized for having fresher foods and, you know.
Yeah, that's cool.
And we're still doing the contact workout for.
Isn't that a little backwards?
Other districts, right?
Yes, we still do Wilmar, Union, and, yeah, Wilmar and Union are the other two.
And then we need the county office.
County offices, it's gonna cost them.
Headwaters.
Headwaters, we also.
Not the county, Sue, maybe the county.
Well, maybe if that's the reason they consider us to be high risk, because we're actually producing for other.
No, because, like, for Wilmar School, they have to pay themselves. Like, when the board of health goes out to Wilmar, they have to pay.
But they're not making anything out there.
Right, but the food's coming to them, so they have to check the temperature of the food, make sure that the temperature is right, make sure that the milk is cold, things like that, so they actually go out to those schools as well.
But they don't have the high risk because they're not.
Okay, but I guess what I'm saying is if the fee is $10,000 because we're high risk, are we confident that we're not being labeled high risk because we are actually, well, for lack of a better term, selling food to somebody else?
Every school, every school has a different price, like, the elementary schools were lower than the junior highs and high schools.
Okay.
So, that's how that works out.
And I only brought that up because if that's the case, then we should be passing that cost along to our customers.
You're just saying the high risk is because we handle raw food. We handle raw products, so they feel that since we have to cook it onsite, things like that.
And you said this is a new?
No, it's not.
We've basically been telling them we don't need to be because we're clean and sanitary, we follow safe food handling processes, but they countered that this year and said, no, you have to be inspected.
So, this is the first year we've been inspected, right?
No, first year we've been inspected in five years.
And the only inspected was once this year because we were arguing with them until the spring, and then they finally said, no, we have to, we have to inspect you, so next year they're gonna inspect us in the fall and this.
So, it would be $20,000 next year, presumably?
They'd do it twice.
Yep.
Why do they do, if they?
Because they can.
Well, that means.
Because it's desperate.
Because that's what their, that's what their codes say we have to do.
And then does it stop until they randomly select us again? So, we've been ran, we've been randomly selected right now to carry on forever now?
No, no.
The random.
Random was the state's. This is, this is.
Yeah, yes, come on.
The counties always said we should been inspected, we've always said we don't need to be, and then they said, well, we have the authority to inspect you, we're going to.
We've heard that before. When we were. Because that's how we got out.
Sounds mean next year we should prepay someone $60,000 so we show that my dollar in the red. You need to buy some inventory.
Yeah, remember, yeah, 365 days. Wait till I get through a couple of other slides, you might see what's gonna happen next year.
I'm gonna have a heart attack.
Exciting stuff. Fill up the cup, it's a little promotion we're working on right now. Case six students were required to be offered a three-quarter cup of vegetables and a half a cup of fruit. They are required to take a half a cup of fruit and/or vegetable. Visualizing a state-required serving is a challenge for students and staff. Students are often sent back in line to add the required amount. This slows down the line, and the children become frustrated. So, last year, the kids would go to line, and now they're gonna go back. The kid would come back with two more carrots, now they gotta go back, which you have to have an eighth of a cup of each vegetable that you take, it's a long thing to get, but.
No, I'm interested.
Is this the Obama requirement? It's another Obama requirement.
So, on a salad bar, if a child takes a, child takes portions, they have to, basically an eighth of a cup of each product that they're gonna take. So, if they don't take that, you have to have them go back, or you have to, when they come through line towards the end, what we're doing is just giving everybody an apple or whatever fruit, say, well, just take this too, so we know that we have the required amount, because when they came in to do the SMI, that's the first thing to look for, is making sure that the children are hitting at least their half a cup of fruit or vegetable, even though you offer three-quarters, they have to take a half, and the requirements are a cup and three-quarter for high school.
Do they also stand outside to see how much is still left?
That, that's, no, that's bad enough.
It's a high.
It's, the rate is bad. So, I came up with two options, I'm gonna let the board decide which one they want to vote, okay? This is decision time.
It's a year old.
Okay, option one is to eliminate what we call now a vegetable and fruit bar and a pre-made salad and fruit. The upside, it guarantees that the students receive the state-approved portions, it's quicker to get the children through the line. The downside is children are forced to take items that they don't like, it increases waste, and it's labor-intensive. Option two, fill up the cup. So, we have each child, a student, with their, with their plate, and they get to keep the vegetables, so we get to keep the vegetable and fruit bar. Children can still choose the items that they like, and it keeps it fun for the kids because they can put in the cup what they want, and, and then we can take a look at what, because every meal has to be looked at before they walk out the door by staff to make sure that it's correct, so they can look at the cup and see if a child is taking enough or not. Basically, the only way you can do it with little kids. So, my recommendation is option two, but if you guys like option one better.
No, I don't like it because it's labor.
So, so, like I said, the downside, it's five cents for the cup, but if you do something fun, it's about eight cents if we have our logo put on it, and we trademark both the cups, which we already did, stuff like that, okay?
You are a trademarked.
Yeah, I do. I figured, maybe, you know.
I like it.
Change of the head, Casa Grande is moving tutorial to the end of the day and adding a shorter break. Morning tutorial was used by over 350 students a day for second chance breakfast, students who could not make breakfast before school starts. Most second chance breakfasts are provided to students enrolled in the free and reduced program. With the short break, we cannot serve all the students, they would not have enough time to eat and get back to class. Food services must eliminate second chance breakfast at Casa Grande High School for the 2013-14 school year. Free and reduced program students can still take advantage of breakfast before school starts. Food services will have available for purchase at break grab-and-go items at the new shorter break. The revenue lost to food service program will be approximately $75,000. That's on the low side, it's about $123,000 in loss for next year, but I'm assuming that I'll make some profit on grab-and-go items, so I figure that there's gonna be about a $75,000 hit because of this.
Now, that's a pay.
Yes, now you're ready to pay for the count? How many, how many kids are we talking about?
350 a day.
That use that service as a second chance breakfast?
Yes, sir.
And that's why we're losing money, because it's paid for? Yeah.
We get money, we get reimbursed from the state and feds for the breakfast program.
Do you think those kids are gonna show up for number four?
Absolutely not.
So, now we have hungry kids because.
Well, there were some people that.
Because they're free to do, so now they have to pay for grab-and-go items, because they love, they're all of themselves.
So, bringing tutorial to the end of the day.
Was this anticipated when we did that?
Well, they, they shortened, yeah, remember, the schools control their master schedule, they shortened, well, they eliminated tutorials, and they shortened the break, and shortened lunch, too.
Right, lunch is gonna be short, too, so it's gonna be a stretch.
But the kids have the opportunity, they get breakfast before school.
They're gonna, they get the full service of breakfast before school, that's not gonna change.
That won't change, so between seven.
The spot in between, which would be, for some, maybe snack time, but.
Between 10:00 and 10:45, we found out that a lot of students use it, Pudlema High, 350 to 400 students use it a day at Pudlema High as well.
So, maybe I'm gonna try to put my positive spin hat on this and say, maybe they'll get up 10 minutes earlier and have breakfast in the morning, which is when you're supposed to eat breakfast, before you go to school. I mean, I don't know.
In some cases, you don't have control when your parents drive you to school.
Yeah, teenagers.
Maybe parents will make decisions that are better for their children.
That's possible.
But, yeah, is there, is there some plan to communicate this to the families that are eligible, so that.
I sent the principal a letter, letting him know to put that out with their package for the new students, to let them know that we just, there's just no way we can accommodate 350 kids in 10 or 15 minutes' time, it's impossible.
So, can you get back to us in six months and let us know if the morning breakfast routine gets increased by a few hundred kids?
Absolutely.
And can we accommodate if it does?
We.
Like, if all of a sudden 300, like, that'll happen, but 350 kids show up before school.
It'll be difficult, if that many kids come before school, we only have a limited crew because breakfast would only serve, like, 60 students.
But if you increase the volume, you can increase staff.
Yeah, exactly, I'll have to increase staff in order, if volume goes up, I have to increase staff.
Because, I mean, that would just be really, you know, really interesting to see this year, to see if, you know, again, some kids can't get to camp for whatever reason, can't, not by choice, but can't get to school, and then, so they're relying on that meal mid-morning, and now they don't have it, now they've got a bunch of kids that aren't free and reduced lunch that aren't eating well.
Just out of curiosity, what time is breakfast start?
Seven, 7:00 a.m. To, I think it's, I haven't seen their new bell schedule, I've requested, I haven't seen it yet, so as soon as I do, I'll figure out.
What happened?
7:30, 7:45, I'm hoping, Steve, you tell me, you know more about that than I do.
School's not gonna start until 8:30 or something, right?
Okay, so, is that when it starts off?
I mean, I don't think it's starting times.
Well, we have, no, but we have that first period, what is it?
Zero.
Zero period, I'm sorry, so, what time does zero period start?
Seven o'clock for zero.
7:20? Okay, so, we normally start breakfast at 7 o'clock for zero-period students.
Okay.
And then we'll just go till 8:10, 8:05.
And how, and how long are we going now? Seven till?
Same.
Same, so.
We're doing the same as.
It's not gonna increase the time to make kids wanna go.
Sounds like we need to drive through.
Good idea.
You get the food truck back on.
The food truck, you have to go around campus with your food truck.
Just kidding, just kidding.
This is our opportunity to ask Ray questions, we'll get chances to see him very often, so, does anybody have any other question they'd like to direct to? Well, do you have any, if that happens over Casa Grande, do you have any alternatives that you could suggest about how we could get through to these kids, maybe even suggest a longer mid-morning break or something? I mean, what's it take, do you think you need to have it open for, to accommodate 350 students, you have to have a 45-minute window?
You'd have to at least have 25 minutes.
Well, if there's the food for purchase, is there a way to have, like, grab-and-go items available, is there some duty card, so that it could be definite from their? The free and reduced.
The problem is, you can't do grab-and-go at breakfast because you have to do the fruit, you have to do the milk, you have to do the entire breakfast.
Qualified meal.
It has to be a qualified meal, and that just takes.
Do you understand that, Phoebe, the qualified meal plan?
There has to be a certain amount of.
From the feds, they tell them, you, when you come through, you have to take certain things, whether you want them or not. So, just to make sure that I'm understanding this, the, this, what you call it, second chance breakfast?
Second, we call it second chance breakfast.
Was being run during the tutorial time?
Yes.
Okay, so, I guess I'm just gonna, again, throw out, well, tutorial's actually not for eating breakfast, maybe this is a better thing for that reason alone, where people are, children are not eating breakfast when they should be utilizing tutorial time, and.
Tutorial's not the end of the day, called office hours, starting at 2:33.
Because 300 children are eating during tutorial time? I mean, they're not.
Yeah, they're not working.
And that's okay with us.
Are they gonna better leave campus if it's the end of the day, can they leave campus and not go to tutorial at all now?
They can leave campus at 2:30, yes.
So, now they're not eating, and now they're not staying at school either.
Well, we'll, we'll be looking forward to receiving a report from around Casa Grande relative to the success of the office hours after school.
Okay.
But tutorial is not a requirement at any time in time, like, if you're going to eat breakfast.
You can go to breakfast, you can.
基本office hours for teachers and adult kids?
Adult kids, yes.
Back to food. How about the, I know a year ago you were concerned about the new requirements and the packaging, and, and the colors and the choices. I know you've implemented it, what's the response from the sites?
It's been challenging because a lot of students just don't wanna take it, and they have to, so, waste was pretty bad this year, because a student doesn't want it, but they have, it's part of a requirement now that you have to take it, you have a choice, you have to take it, so, as soon as you say that, we found that we were doing better offering, that the kids would actually go, yeah, I'll take that, rather than forcing it. Now, we found that at our school to be the case, but there's nothing we can do about it, we have to do it this year.
And if it's an open, not a packaged, then it's not even something that can go in a shared table or anything, right?
You're not allowed to have shared tables.
Are we call posting or anything, so at least?
Sometimes, sometimes you.
I don't know, are we doing anything to not just be throwing this in the landfill?
Anybody else?
Well, I like the open cup idea, just because they at least can pick what they like out of the options.
Okay, so, we'll go with that next year, then?
Parenting 101. Choices are.
Oh, your option two, do you, will you vote on that or just?
We appreciate you for, we appreciate the point, but you're gonna have to make that decision.
Okay.
But you're doing, I think you're doing a great job, I mean, to show $60,000 profit and comply with all that, I think that's excellent.
Thank you very much.
And Ray, I will, if we're, I will end with the same thing that I share with Tricia when Tricia comes up, you have a very, very difficult job, and we appreciate that, and sometimes some of this may sound like we're really frustrated, or frustrated at you, we're not, it's a bigger picture within the confines of what you're required to do, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was item E. We'll move to item F, which is comments from the public. Sue, I don't know if we have any cards, do we have anybody, anybody in the public that would like to make comment? Seeing no one rise, we will not have public comments. Activities that correspond to school board members, which is item G, and I know we'll[1667.12]
And I ended up electing to pass around my little cheat sheet. It hasn't only been leaked, so I think that we should all just keep this suspense building and share next time. Those activities, activities of school board members. I don't have any correspondence to share, so unless anybody has something that I want to talk about right now, we'll put that over to the next agenda. All right, let's go to the consent agenda, since we didn't have any changes. There's a hand signal going on. For the next item.
Sorry.
As you're on cue, so hang tight on the next item.
Nothing on consent, everyone.
Okay, so on the consent agenda, we'll take a motion. Need discussion on the consent agenda? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, two, that's five oh. And let's go to Administration, Human Resources, the first holdout in the employment report. And I believe, I have a speaker.
Sorry, I was building a website. It is my pleasure to introduce Sheila Garvey as the new principal at McNear Elementary School. Kamana Sheila. As you know, Sheila last year served as our administrative intern at Cherry Valley and worked alongside, very closely alongside Kathy Larson. And I know that she learned a ton from Kathy Larson. She also got the opportunity to learn from all of the elementary principals across the district and spent time with each and every one of them. So, we were worried, a little bit worried about, was this program going to work? And we have had two administrative interns at the elementary level, and I am happy to report today that they are both elementary principals. One in this district and one outside the district. So, welcome Sheila.
Thank you, thank you, I'm very excited. And I spent last weekend at the Google Summit for Education with four McNear teachers, one thing, and the staff, a little bit. And I'm really excited to join the community, so thank you very much.
Well, let's make it official. Do I have a motion?
I already moved, didn't I?
Did you?
No.
No.
How about now?
Okay, let's go down to item six. Hold out on classified management salary schedule, the recommended motion that the board approve this amended salary schedule, which increases the workday and salary for the 260-day positions effective July 1st, 2013.
So, basically, the work year can vary, it can be 260, 261, or sometimes even 262 workdays. So, what these two revised schedules do is account for that change in the actual number of workdays in the year.
So, every year will we have to...
We may.
Do this, where we decide how many days there are and then...
Yeah.
If it changes from the prior year.
Okay, we never did that before.
Now, we, we used to pay classified full-time and classified management full-time as 260, regardless of how many workdays there were in a year. With the new system, it actually pays them based on the number of days. So, we're now changing it, so we'll be bringing it back, back to the board for 12-month employees to denote the exact number of workdays in a year.
Okay.
Okay, any questions, discussion?
I have a question. So, I'm just looking at raise 28.
Yes.
Does it, it's based on a daily rate?
The way the system breaks it down, it does become a daily rate.
So, it's not, they're not getting a raise of any sort, it just...
They're getting another day of work.
Another day, right.
Yeah, and the reason it's on a daily rate is if they leave during the course of the year, you have to, by, for purrs, you have to know how many days they worked, calculate, you know, how many days they're supposed to work in the year, how many days they've worked, and then pay them based on a daily rate. And so, that necessitates knowing the number of days in the year.
Any other question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Just we have a sibling to that one here, the confidential employee salary schedule, recommend a motion that the board approve this amended salary schedule, which increases the workdays and salary for the 260-day positions effective July 1st, 2013. So, am I correct, it's the sister to this other one, or sibling or brother, or whatever you want to call it?
Right, probably sister. Well, it just happens that there's all women who are affected by that particular salary schedule.
Did I not know that?
But, um...
You said sibling first.
So, it's, it, the exact same issue.
Questions on that? All those in favor? Closed? And that is all in Administration, Human Resources? Oh, we have Williams here.
Yeah, he's, he had the last, next two items, just for information purposes.
Because Williams is always in Administration, Human Resources, I thought it was over there.
It's under, it's under Administration, Human Resources, yeah. It's a Ron. It's a Ron either.
Because Ron gets all the...
Yep.
I don't know that I've ever heard a complaint in seven.
I think one time we had one.
I think we did have one complaint, I think that's true. But we do not have any complaints to report in this reporting period for either eighth or ninth.
Now, moving over to business services. Item five, resolution 1314-01, we recommend a motion that resolution 1314-01 with the Board of Education, Plomo City School, so, Plomo City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts authorizing signature for budget transfers of funds be adopted.
So, this is an annual resolution that we do to just indicate who's authorized to basically move money from one category to another. Typically, that would be the supervisor of budget and accounting. And in that person's absence, it would be either myself or the superintendent. And that's it.
I'd just like to take this time to comment that I'm referring it in purchase order authorization format.
Great. Speaking of, did you give my email to them?
No, I did not.
I had a question, I don't want to flash you it.
Okay.
Okay, so, I had a motion in a second, and there was a question, is there any other questions on there? All those in favor? Closed? Uh, let's see, you talked about the regions of the University of California, do I?
Nope.
Okay, future business, column of activities, board members' consideration, and Gemma. The next meeting, we can meet on August 13th, at which time we will all have fabulous stories to tell of where we've been and what we've done, things that people have sent to us. And that's just a standard meeting, right? See, there's nothing dramatic.
I, you have vacation permit, too, right? Are you going to be here that many?
I'll be here that day.
I will not be here that many.
Okay, so, we'll have, we'll have four, so we'll have a four.
Again, you've been here more than Ricky. Tell you to go down there.
Uh, let's see, we're going to break to close, you don't have a reservation assigned, do you?
Please, please, the reservation is signed, yes.
Okay, well, we'll do that while we concurrently adjourn to closed session. And we're adjourning to closed session for some interviews for some principal position.